The Executive Session of the Wayne Board of Education Regular Meeting of November fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education fifteen-hour drive way to Jersey zero seven four seven zero. The statement of compliance setting forth time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act when the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Can everybody please rise for the flag salute in a moment of silence, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, the only announcement I have at the moment is we have to go back into executive session for a few minutes. So, we are going to close this meeting for now and go into exec, and then we will come back out when we are ready. So, everybody will have to step out now, sorry.
Real nice.
I know. All right, do I have my motion? Stop. Okay, Dr. Toback, it is now up to you. The superintendent's report.
So, um... Jen was able to pull up here today. So, okay, so for my report, so good evening, everybody. There's a lot of excited members, so I'm just gonna go over a few things. First of all, the Wayne Girls, Wayne Valley Girls volleyball team is now the NJSA Group Three State Sexual Champions. So, the title team, after an amazing win over a tough West Morris team, onto the Group Three State Finals this Saturday versus Men on the William Patterson University. Also, best wishes to the Wayne Valley Football Team as they take on Phillipsburg for a chance to play for the Group Four State Title following weekend MetLife. So, there's also a great new addition to our wellness goal. The elementary schools have recently formed a social media committee with representation from each elementary school under the direction of Matthew Crowley, Principal Lafayette, and Tracey Lee, our Teacher Coordinator of Education. Committee recently met to develop a mission statement, complete research on specific applications that our students are using, and create school activities and incentives that encourage the development of interpersonal skills. This information will be organized in a website that will serve as a parent resource for various social media applications and provide resources for parents who'd like to speak to their children about social media and technology. So, as we know, social media creates a lot of pressure in the lives of students. We also know that quite a few of our HIV cases, a lot of our discipline issues, are all rooted in activities that take place on social media. So, there's a lot that goes on with social media, and so we're trying to do more to educate parents. We also have a program on Monday at Wayne Valley High School. Don, would you like to talk about that just real quick?
Yes, it's a program for elementary parents. We have an expert coming in for the field, which is being sponsored by the Wayne Education Foundation, tell you about that. And it's an opportunity for parents to learn about apps that their elementary children may have on their phones that they do not have awareness of or don't understand. And that's the first of, we hope, to have many parent education sessions once we can gather some information and see what it is that parents would like to explore more.
So, I'd like to talk a little bit about Veterans Day. So, our school system does an exceptional job of recognizing and thanking veterans for sacrifices that they made during their service. Our middle schools really go all out with musical performances, poetry, and a variety of other ways that they recognize veterans. I was able to attend the Veterans Event at Anthony Wayne Middle Schools, and it was very easy to see how much the program meant to the veterans in attendance, as many were in tears as they stood proudly while they were recognized by our students and staff members. Our elementary schools are also involved. This year, Pacon Act Fourth Grade Chorus hosted seventeen grandfathers and fathers who served in the military. There were veterans from each branch of the military, and the veteran family members were honored, as they recall, individually to stand by their child or grandchild as the chorus sang Proud of Our Veterans. On Friday, November first, Scotta Colfax Middle School held their annual Pink Out Rally, which was the culmination of a month-long fundraising effort that included competitions, pink hair extensions, bracelets, lollipops, stickers. More than that took place in October during Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Students and families raised a total of six thousand seven hundred and nine dollars. The school community was proud to donate five thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars to Mary's Place by the Sea, which is an organization in Ocean Grove, New Jersey that helps women with cancer to pause for medical treatments and daily responsibilities to focus on the healing of the mind, body, and soul. Eight hundred and eighty dollars was donated to Pink Hair for Hope. Fifty dollars was donated to the Dana Ergo Smith Scholarship Fund at Wayne Hills High School. So, Scotta Colfax has quite a tradition of raising funds for those in need. Maureen Weir and I met with representatives of Passaic County Community College to speak about our partnerships this week, and we're happy to announce... Excuse me. We're happy to announce that based on the strength of our automotive technology programs at each of our high schools, Passaic County Community College is willing to award thirty college credits toward an associate's degree in automotive technology to all of our students participating in the program for all four years, and if they complete the total of six courses that are within the Passaic County Community College Program. So, congratulations to Mr. Hopper and Mr. Bergen for building such a strong automotive technology program over the years. It's quite an accomplishment. So, during this reporting period, there were sixteen incidents reported as HIV, so quite a lot that went on within the world of HIV this month. After a thorough investigation, in each case, five of those cases were found to be actual cases of HIV. I apologize, but I'll give you one.
Cue.
Okay, we're ready. So, at this time, what we'd like to do is, we have a presentation to feature, so we're very excited, very happy to move ahead with a new program for our students. In attendance this evening, we have Jennifer Brano, Assistant Director in the Department of Student Support Services, along with Wayne Valley Assistant Principal, there we are, okay, of athletics, Dave Drysjock, and Wayne Hills Assistant Principal of Athletics, Jeff Delolo. Unfortunately, it appears...
They're okay with that.
They're okay.
We have technical difficulties.
So, they're that good that they don't... They're very excited to talk about the program, because this is really something that is very exciting for the district, so I'm very happy about this moving forward.
Good evening. Tonight, we are excited to share information about the Play Unified School Partnership Grant received by our district. This grant is offered by Special Olympics New Jersey and provides expansion on meaningful and inclusive extracurricular options for students. The application was submitted through the collaboration efforts of Student Support Services and the Wayne Hills and Wayne Valley Athletic Departments. This year, the focus revolves around three components, which include Unified Sports, Unified Club, and a whole school engagement activity. As part of the grant, professional development is offered to support these components. We are optimistic that the initiative will get off to a fast start as we maximize the solid foundation Wayne already has in place with the successful Stars Program, which has grown district-wide. Now, I'm going to introduce Mr. Jeff Delolo and Mr. Dave Drysjock, Assistant Principals of Athletics and Activities for Wayne Hills and Wayne Valley.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, all right, so Unified Sports is a part of Special Olympics and also a part of the New Jersey State Interschool Athletic Association. And what it does is it combines students with and without disabilities, and it combines and forms a team with these students. So, the social inclusion part of it is obviously outstanding, and these teams will work together, practicing, training, and competing in games and events. So, the benefits for not only the students with and without disabilities, but also for our teachers, our coaches, our parents, our community, you know, we could go on and on, the importance of something like this. So, Jeff came from Randolph High School, and they had that, the Unified Sports over by there, by him, and, you know, we talked about it, and, you know, for me, it was a home run. I thought it was a great idea. Jen was all in, and then we took it from there. But Jeff's gonna have a little bit more to say on it, because Jeff is also part of the NJSI Double A Committee with Unified Sports.
Yeah, thank you, Dave. It's such a great program. I can't tell you enough about it. And one of the things I want to really commend us for is, this is a big district, and no big district gets moved in a nimble way. And to say that we proposed this in the spring is something that's before you as a board of education, and you're voting on and embracing, I think is a real feather in our cap as a district. Ten years ago, the Special Olympics went to the state of New Jersey and said, hey, listen, we'd like to do this joint effort for this inclusion purpose that Dave noted, make sure that our kids are having as integrated and experienced in the special ed realm as they could possibly have. And so, the only thing that you can't have is a varsity athlete on that team. Otherwise, they could be in the regular season for basketball or for track. We're gonna try and do both of those this year, kind of a scaled-down version a little bit, to kind of grow into ourselves. But a great grant opportunity, thanks to Jen for putting all of those pieces together to make sure that we were able to have... It's a pretty exhaustive process. They want to make sure that a district is invested on every level. So, the special services has to put the grant application together, and then the athletic departments have to record and support that you're gonna have that program and be committed to the underwriting of whatever other activities have to go on as far as identifying, hiring a coach, and all those other things that we're going through right now. So, really, really exciting stuff. We're looking forward to having a playoff game between Wayne Valley and Wayne Hills to kick it all off, hopefully in the near future, so look for that. Hopefully, you'll be able to be there. If not, we'll certainly send you photos and all that type of thing. I don't know if there are any questions. We're happy to answer them, that's for sure.
Mr. Albanese?
Just an estimate. Do you have an idea how many students you think might participate?
Sure.
I would say that we probably... So, we're starting at the high school level this year, and we're looking to expand it, you know, next year, maybe perhaps middle school, and go down from there. But I would say we probably will have maybe at least thirty-five from Valley, thirty-five from, you know, about thirty-ish, forty-ish from each school.
Fairly saying, the Stars Program, which we've had for a few years, has been, one of the greatest pieces of that is having the relationship, which we had, just our latest example of this was this past Wednesday, or yesterday.
Yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday, in which one of our sports teams hosts the Stars athletes, so they come up and they do a one-an-hour program with us. So, yes, it was cheerleading, but they'd been in girls soccer and in boys soccer and wrestling last year and et cetera. So, we already had a great foundation for this taking off, so if you're using those numbers as a potential predictor, I think those are right on.
That's great, thank you.
That was my question. Which sports are we talking about?
Yeah.
So, all sports?
No.
Any sport?
We're talking specifically...
Are you only gonna start off with a few?
We're overstating on basketball in the winter and track and field in the spring.
I'm sorry?
Basketball in the winter and track and field in the spring.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Which means that if you're out as a basketball team, you will have it integrated at all times. There will be equal number of athletes on your both teams that are regular ed versus special ed in that setting, playing side by side with one another.
That's great. Fantastic, thank you.
We're really excited about it.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us in. We appreciate it. And thank you for all the support.
Revisions to the agenda. Oh, yeah, we can probably have... Okay, let me start it off. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, tonight, on our agenda, we have the portion for public comment related to the superintendent's contract. It is currently listed on our agenda tonight under the Emergent Section, Item Number T-13. That action reads, "Resolve that the Board of Education approved a modified employment contract for Dr. Mark Toback as superintendent of schools effective November one, two thousand nineteen, through June thirty, two thousand twenty-four, as reviewed and approved by the executive county superintendent." So, this is an opportunity that the general public can come up and vote in and make the comments be heard. Okay. You're still on. Still on, okay. Tonight is a public work session. We are adding some items to the Emergent Section, mainly in, we'll start off with S. Emergent Education Items, which is Item One through Eight. We are adding S. Eight, which is Approval of Sidebar Agreement, and that reads, "Resolve that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent hereby provides the indemnification to defend and hold harmless agreement between Wayne Paraprofessionals Association, Employee ID Number Three Eight Five Four, and the Wayne Township Board of Education regarding the transfer of illness days as attached by reference, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of settlement to further implement same." Under T. Emergent Human Resource Items, One through Fourteen, we are revising T-10, which is Approval of Additional Compensation, which is the Stars Coordinator on the Attachment Online Number Thirteen, attached to the resolution, which there is a second grid that will be revised at line item number two to delete Christine Cordiera and add Kathleen Correa as the Stars Coordinator at the elementary level. We have three items also being added to Section X, Emergent School Resource-Legal. The first one is the Doctrine of Necessity, which will be X-one, it'll be read later in our meeting. X-two will be the Separation Agreement, Approval of Employment Separation Agreement and Release, and that reads, "Resolve that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the Superintendent approves the employee separation agreement and release between Employee ID Number Two Eight Eight Three and the Wayne Township Board of Education as attached by reference, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The Business Administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement to further implement same." The third item, X-three, again in that School Resource Legal section, is for an approval of agreement with the WEA, and that will read, "As resolved, the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the Superintendent approves the memorandum of agreement between the Board and the WEA related to the association present reference heretofore. The Board, President, and Secretary are authorized to execute the agreement and take all actions necessary to implement same." That concludes the changes to the agenda. Thank you. Okay. This time, we're gonna open to the public on agenda items only. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Roll Business. Go ahead, mover. I'll move. Okay. We're gonna move to Section R, the Emergent Administrative Items. Do I have a mover? Okay, roll call, please. Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Badner?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
I'm abstaining on the X-three and T-thirteen.
We're not up to...
I'm sorry.
We're just... We're doing R. Yes, the R section.
There was more than all of them.
R moves all of the emergent items, I mean, all the work section items. Okay. Great. Is there an affirmative vote?
Yes.
Misses Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
And Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Motion carries. Here, we're gonna go to Section S, which is the Emergent Education Items, with the amended that Mr. Moffett read into the record. Do I have a mover? Okay, Mrs. Putta?
I'll second.
And Mrs. Shear? Okay, roll call. Mr. Badner?
Pass.
Yes. No, pass. Do you say pass or yes?
Pass.
Pass. Do you want me to not come back? Come back. Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
And I'll return for Mr. Badner's vote.
Yes, except number five, I'm abstaining on number seven and eight.
Abstain on number five and eight?
No, just abstain on number five.
I know. And now, we are up to T., which is the Emergent Human Resource Items, Ones and Fourteen. Do I have a mover?
I'll move.
Second. Questions, comments? Roll call, please. Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Misses Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
I'll abstain on T-eight, name number eighteen, yes to this.
Mr. Badner?
Yes.
And Mr. Bubba?
I'm going to abstain on the same one that Mrs. Albanese did.
T-eight, number eighteen.
Number eighteen.
Oh, and yes or no?
Yes to this.
Motion carries. Okay. Hey, Emergent Policy, Approval of... I will abstain on five-two, second reading. Do I have a mover?
I'll move.
Second. Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mr. Badner?
Questions, comments?
Roll call, please. Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
I'll abstain on T-eight, name number eighteen, yes to this.
Mr. Badner?
Yes.
And Mr. Bubba?
I'm going to abstain on the same one that Mrs. Albanese did.
T-eight, number eighteen.
Number eighteen.
Oh, and yes or no?
Yes to this.
Motion carries. Okay. Hey, Emergent Policy, Approval of... I will abstain on five-two, second reading. Do I have a mover?
I'll move.
Second. Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mr. Badner?
Questions, comments?
Roll call, please. Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Badner?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Badner?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
I'll bear with me one second. Yes.
And Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Section... The School Resource Pioneer...
I'll move.
Okay, Mrs. Shear, Mr. Giordano? Questions, comments? Roll call, please. Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
I'll abstain on D-one, yes to this.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
And Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, and we have the three added for the X., for the School Resource Legal, so... W? There's nothing under W. I have it as X's legal, and I didn't want to read the... Right, there's nothing under W. Right. We're up to X, so, Mr. Geppert, you are up.
Resolution of the Wayne Township Board of Education invoking the Doctrine of Necessity, whereas the School Ethics Act NJSA eighteen-eight twelve hyphen twenty-one was enacted by the New Jersey State Legislature to ensure and preserve public confidence in school board members and school administrators, and to provide specific ethical standards to guide their conduct. And whereas questions arose regarding how a board should invoke the Doctrine of Necessity when a quorum of a board of education has conflicts of interest on a matter required to be voted upon. And whereas the School Ethics Commission provided guidance in Public Advisory Opinion three ninety-eight, and whereas the opinion set forth that when it is necessary for a board to invoke the Doctrine of Necessity, the board should state publicly that it is doing so, the reason that such an action is necessary, and the specific nature of the conflicts of interest. And whereas the School Ethics Commission by Resolution Day of February twenty-five, two thousand and three, clarified and required a board of education invoking the Doctrine of Necessity to adopt a resolution setting forth that they are invoking the doctrine, the reason for doing so, and the specific nature of the conflicts of interest. And whereas the School Ethics Commission further directed boards of education that invoke the doctrine to read the resolution at a regularly scheduled public meeting, post it where post-public notices for thirty days, and provide the commission with a copy. And whereas the Wayne Township Board of Education desires to resolve litigation brought on behalf of the Wayne Education Association, and whereas the School Ethics Commission has issued advisory opinions in this matter, A ten seventeen, May twenty-eight eighteen, identifying various conflicts, and whereas Donald Pavlak has espoused Harvard Pavlak School's social worker in Wayne School District, who's a member of the NJEA, and whereas Mitchell Badner holds an administrative position as Director of Instruction for the Bergen County Special Services School District, and whereas Vice President Stacy Shear is employed by the Passaic Board of Education and is an NJEA member, and whereas Board Member Suzanne Putta is a recent retiree of the WEA, has a son, Michael Putta, teacher, and daughter-in-law in Lima, Putta, guidance counselor, were employed by Passaic County Technical Institute, are NJEA members, and whereas Board Member Matthew Giordano is employed by the Bloomfield Board of Education and is an NJEA member. And whereas the inability of the above five board members to participate in this process results in the lack of a quorum, and whereas in order to resolve disputes with the WEA, the board must have a quorum, and whereas the board desires to invoke the Doctrine of Necessity in accordance with the procedures established by the commission to resolve litigation of the WEA, now therefore be resolved by the Wayne Township Board of Education, County of Passaic, state of New Jersey, as follows. One, that the five board members as noted above are in conflict by nature of their employment and relative's employment, and the board therefore invokes the Doctrine of Necessity to consider and act upon the agreement with the WEA. Two, that this resolution shall be read at the public meeting of November fourteen, two thousand and nineteen, shall be posted where the board posts public notices for thirty days. Three, that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the School Ethics Commission by the Board Secretary.
Thank you. Do I have a mover? On X-one through three.
I move.
Second. Questions, comments? Roll call, please. Mr. Pavlak?
Yes, I'll abstain on X-three.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Badner?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes, and for the record, I'd like to say that I'm glad to see that this is going to an end.
Yes. Mr. Giordano?
Abstain.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
And Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. This time, we're gonna open the meeting with public on any topic. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person.
and whereas the opinion set forth that when it is necessary for a board to invoke the Doctrine of Necessity, the board should state publicly that it is doing so, the reason that such an action is necessary, and the specific nature of the conflicts of interest. And whereas the School Ethics Commission by Resolution dated February 25, 2003, clarified and required a board of education invoking the Doctrine of Necessity to adopt a resolution setting forth that they are invoking the doctrine, the reason for doing so, and the specific nature of the conflicts of interest. And whereas the School Ethics Commission further directed boards of education that invoke the doctrine to read the resolution at a regularly scheduled public meeting, posted where post-public notices for thirty days, and provide the commission with a copy. And whereas the Wayne Township Board of Education desires to resolve litigation brought on behalf of the Wayne Education Association, and whereas the School Ethics Commission has issued advisory opinions in this matter, A-1017, May 28, 18, identifying various conflicts, and whereas Donald Pavlak has espoused Barbara Pavlak, school social worker in Wayne School District, who's a member of the NJEA, and whereas Mitchell Badner holds an administrative position as Director of Instruction for the Bergen County Special Services School District, and whereas Vice President Stacy Shear is employed by the Passaic Board of Education and is an NJEA member, and whereas Board Member Suzanne Putta is a recent retiree of the WEA, has a son, Michael Putta, teacher, and daughter-in-law, Lima Putta, guidance counselor, were employed by Passaic County Technical Institute, are NJEA members, and whereas Board Member Matthew Giordano is employed by the Bloomfield Board of Education and is an NJEA member. And whereas the inability of the above five board members to participate in this process results in the lack of a quorum, and whereas in order to resolve disputes with the WEA, the board must have a quorum. And whereas the board desires to invoke the Doctrine of Necessity in accordance with the procedures established by the commission to resolve litigation of the WEA, now therefore be resolved by the Wayne Township Board of Education, County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, as follows. One, that the five board members, as noted above, are in conflict by nature of their employment and relative's employment, and the board therefore invokes the Doctrine of Necessity to consider and act upon the agreement with the WEA. Two, that this resolution shall be read at the public meeting of November 14, 2019, shall be posted where the board posts public notices for thirty days. Three, that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the School Ethics Commission by the Board's Secretary.
Thank you. Do I have a mover? On X-1 through 3.
I move.
Mrs. Putta? Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes, I'm abstaining on X-3.
Mrs. Putta?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Badner?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes, and for the record, I'd like to say that I'm glad to see that this is going to an end. Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Abstained.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
And Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. At this time, we're gonna open the meeting to the public on any topic. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Do I have a mover?
Second.
Mr. Badner and Mr. Pavlak?
Mr. President, you know, one vice.
Second.
Mr. Pavlak and Mr. Duffy? Okay. Old Business? New Business?
Yes.
I just wanted to pay you back on what Dr. Toback had said about all the wonderful veterans programs. I attended one at George Washington Middle School today, and I was the teary one. They do such an excellent job, I can't even begin to describe. And every year, it just gets bigger and bigger, and it's always a pleasure to have one of our former administrators, Dr. Walter Crowick, or Dr. K., as we used to call him, from GW, who was the one who started the program way back in the early 90s. And he actually gave Mr. Leonard a plaque today, totally unexpectedly, for continuing the program and for continuing to build upon it. It was wonderful. And I always like to point out on our agenda, when we have new community partners for our structured learning program, and there are several in tonight's agenda, if you can take the time to look at them. I had it earmarked, but now I can't find it. Several, but anyway, we can't do what we do without them, and we appreciate their partnership. And that's my comments. Oh, and absolutely, I want to point out that, in case it wasn't totally understood, we did come to an agreement with the union president this evening, and it's been resolved. And thankfully, November, what's today? Fourteenth. Thank you.
Mr. Giordano?
I just wanted to also repeat my salute to the middle school program for Veterans Day. My daughter went through seven years ago, and her grandfather, who's now eighty-five years old, he's immortalized on the walls of GW. He's still alive and doing well, but he'll be there always. To this day, he's still, he's very touched by what Wayne did for him, and I want to personally thank them all for doing this, and I think of the good work, and this is the reason why I serve at the board, because of these wonderful programs and the work of people in Wayne, so thank you.
Go for the next speaker.
I'll raise that next speaker.
Okay. Anyone else? Do I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you all.